Gillian is going to facilitate our conversation. She was asking me today, like, what is the desired outcome?
Okay.
So. So this.
Let's get going.
Hello, your happy holidays.
Oh, thank you.
Here we are.
Oh, no problem.
I'll do it.
Smart board?
Okay.
Well, then, our minds are in the same place tonight. That's a good thing.
Some of those things, it's like, oh.
Anytime.
For the children, um.
Anything for the children.
We're not taking part in comment.
No, but it might work it in somehow.
Please. We didn't advertise it.
No, but there are people here. This is Betsy Shank and the Montessori people from.
No, I don't, we did not agree to, I'm sorry.
The man was like magnificent at mediating that conversation. He did an awesome job. It's not to rehash exactly everything that we talked about in policy, for sure. Yeah. Oh, really? Oh, yes. That was my bad for not calling that out. I will take full responsibility as the one Jewish person on the board that I didn't call that out.
It's something we all.
I think that we, we. We did say that community is welcome.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
I call to order the December 16th, 2014 Special Public Meeting, Community Workshop of Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience and here on the floor to please silence your cellphones and other electronic devices. Before we get fully started and kind of do the outline of what tonight looks like, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for to nominate a treasurer pro tem for tonight's meeting.
I nominate board members Melody Bates.
Is there a second? Thank you. And we'll have a roll call for that and we'll hand the file over, even though you're not official yet.
Okay. So it was moved by Nelms, seconded by Hoffman. Okay, Mrs. Bates, aye. Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman. Mr. Coons?
Aye.
Mr. Minera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye. And you'll have roll call for attendance, please?
Roll call, Mrs. Bates, present. Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Happily present.
Hoffman?
Here.
Use that one.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Minera?
Here.
Mr. Nelms?
Happily present.
President Bolton?
I'm happy and I'm present. Tonight is a kind of a special sort of meeting and, and there is certainly some, uh, I particularly like these because I don't have to do very much at all. We are blessed to have the president of Maersen here, Gillian Darwish. And the good doctor is going to lead us in a facilitated conversation about what we have met about today, which is, uh, and before. And that is to explore some of the opportunities that the district has to expand our choices and try to figure out how we might do that. And also to review sort of where we are, how we got where we are. And tonight, uh, there is a, a particular interest by the board to be able to have that facilitated conversation. We do not have on the agenda, uh, an opportunity for the public to speak, but instead to participate via listening and, and, and valuing hopefully what we say. And, and, uh, at a later time after this conversation takes place, a full participation because we think that this is something that the public is going to be very interested in and has great insight as to what to do. But it's, it's great for you all to be here tonight to, to kind of, uh, serve as not our sounding board, but indeed those, uh, extra eyes and, and, and good thoughts. So at this point in time, Mrs. Bates would like to make a comment?
I would like to make a comment because unfortunately I was not able to attend policy. And from what I understand, the policy committee meeting, uh, discussed policy. This meeting is not to discuss the policy, is my understanding. This meeting is to discuss the capacity of this district, where the needs are and how to expand them. So I just wanted to make sure that the board agrees that that is the topic, unlike what was handled in policy.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarity.
And I think Dr. Darwish will be able to further expound on that. And we welcome, uh, President Dr. Gillian Darwish from Maersen Academy to lead us through this discussion. We also thank the superintendent and her staff and the senior staff particularly for putting together the kind of information that we needed to have, even to have a starting point tonight. We appreciate the hard work and, uh, some of the creative thinking that's going along with, with preparing us for this, um, challenge. Dr. Darwish.
Great. We're so glad to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you and discuss this important issue. I think as, as already been stated, um, you know, it's called a workshop. It'll be a combination of facilitated conversation, um, as well as presentation. I think on your agenda, you'll see that they're separated in two buckets, but instead we're going to join those so that we have many presentations, um, interseated in your conversation. So, um, just to be perfectly clear, I am not the subject matter expert here. My expertise is in hoping to draw out the wisdom in the room, um, so that towards shared ends, you can come up with the things you really need to bucket and come back to and really address, um, in an ongoing conversation. Right? Because we have 90 minutes tonight. So what we can do strategically is look at the issues you're facing, identify where the questions are and what you need to tackle. Create a process so that you can take it back and, and plummet further, um, and set maybe a beginning timeline with some of that. That's a lot to cover in the sweep of 90 minutes, but we're going to, that's what we're going to try to do. And of course, we have, um, loads of subject matter experts here who are going to inform us along the way. So like I said, we're going to have, um, these kind of mini, uh, presentations infused in, inside the conversation. But then, uh, we might be calling on the, the row behind us to inform us here and there when we get stuck or something just needs to be addressed in a, in a definitive or tangible kind of way. So. In case, uh, in case December 8 seems like a long time ago. I know this time of year, like yesterday seems like a long time ago. So much is going on. But just to drive us back to where the conversation really began about why we're even here tonight having this workshop. Um, these are the conversation drivers that were taken from the board minutes. And just to remind us of that vocabulary and what came up, these are kind of some verbatim comments from you as the board members. You can see there what was on your mind just about a week ago. And the intent of the conversation then is to take those ideas, again, as the drivers, to create this outline that again will, will shape the conversation this evening. So the first thing that we're going to try to take a look at, again, reflecting your notes, is this notion of, um, you know, what are the schools in demand? And I think we can think about that in a number of ways. Certainly one, um, tangible way to look at it is just where the numbers are. But there really is a lot more to that that you could look at if you so choose. So, you know, this notion of proof points, meaning where is the living proof of your vision in action, um, is another way to look at it. And so you might, if we go back to where you all have stood with your strategic priorities and where you see your vision, um, this is a good anchor to say, where is, where is the proof that our vision is being lived in the world? And that includes, of course, each one of these segments. So the notion of where are we seeing, you know, distinguished professionals committed to serving diverse learners? Just to remind us what, what you're thinking about. Where are students experiencing tremendous choice, um, that respond to them as whole people, whole children, whole, whole students? Um, where are there a robust and inclusive network of engaged parents, community and stakeholders that are thinking about safe and vibrant schools? I know in every school, every school in this district, there is a developmental curve where these things are evidenced and where they are maturing. So it's not to leave anyone out at all. Um, where great systems are being thought of, certainly that's at the district level, but even at every individual school building level. Ways to think about how this is being proved out in, in real life with, um, operational and financial, technical, programmatic, um, systems that are working beautifully together. And then, of course, great learning environments. The notion of engaging learning opportunities for every child of every day. Right? So just as a point to just ground us again about what you're thinking about when you think about proof points. So we'll talk about that for just a moment. Then we'll also look at the next question, really, after the what is the how. So how are people, children, students, families, communities, um, accessing those proof points? And here's what I'd like to do in, in this regard. Invite folks to think about what are the ways that those decisions must be made? What is vital to making good decisions in this area? And then we'll talk, uh, or listen to our subject matter experts here in the district about what's going on currently, why it's the way it is, et cetera. And then maybe have a conversation about what kind of questions, uh, might go with that presentation. And the second how question is then, how to expand? So there are places where there's, we need, we can look at capacity versus enrollment. And again, we'll have another little mini presentation about that. Um, and all of this will be in reference to the information you have in your binders. Um, talk about expansion possibilities. So you have some really creative things to stoke your thinking in the binders that might help us, um, illuminate some ideas. I'm sure you have many others. If we sequence some of those activities then, what would be priority? How do we get to them? Who's going to tackle them, et cetera? And then because of the, uh, the nature of the timing of this conversation, it might be useful to think about the conversation that's coming tomorrow, um, at your, uh, committee of the whole. I, I call it Cal so much I can never remember the C.
Matters now, it's a special public.
Um, so the meeting tomorrow, I'll leave it at that. You know, what kinds of questions might be useful from this when you illuminate where you're going, what you want to do, what you want to create, that you might ask of this group who, who could potentially work on that with you. So that's the outline of where we're going. Is that getting at what people had in mind seemed like the right course of action?
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, let's just dive in then. So.
Let me interrupt this. Is the audience able to hear?
No.
So.
Oh.
We need it to be a little bit better.
Okay, so can you hear me if I do this? Or, so let me try this. Can you hear me if I do this?
Oh, shoot.
I think, I think I keep moving this button and it's not doing anything.
Right, when you were close to the mic, we could hear you.
Okay. Um, okay, I'm going to try just to turn to these thumbs and to vocalize better. And you're.
Why don't they come down further?
If you need me to talk louder.
Tell them to come down.
Is that fair? I'm not sure what else to do at this point other than that.
Can we also?
I'll need to come down. Closer if you could and we'll try to work out whatever is the sound issue with the, uh, with the mobile mic.
Okay. And I'm happy to grab a, a handheld too. So I'll know that thumbs up doesn't mean, wow, you're doing a great job. It means start talking louder. All right, all right.
Why don't you come closer? Wouldn't that help?
Yeah, I mean, you're welcome. Yeah, because I'm going to spend some time over here too. So you might be best positioned over there, just so you know. Okay? Okay, sounds good. Okay, so the first thing we need to do, we, um, certainly are not going to be able to name every, uh, instance that you're looking at a proof point in the district and plumb through all the possibilities for that. But what would be potentially meaningful to go through this evening is to develop, um, just a, a quick list of some that just come to mind. You think of, let me just put this back up here. When you think of these notions and where you see living proof in the district, what comes to mind? What, what school do you point to? And let's just get a quick idea of some of those things. And then we're going to take three that you really want to plumb into a little bit more. Okay, so let's do that first. So jump in.
These elements coming to life in our district, the great people, the great communities.
I think we have some, some of our, I think we have some of our magnet schools, right? Like we know, um, that are very different, but yet very high in demand, like, um, Sands or, um, or Fairview. We also have neighborhood schools that are at and above capacity, um, where we know a lot of this is happening, like, uh, PRM, Westwood gained 100 kids this year. So we know that just a great culture being built there. Great, those are a couple, well, Clark, obviously we know Clark is one a lot of people here are interested in. So Clark's another one I'd add.
Sure.
For other folks.
Well, I think, uh, I'll simply pull out a couple highlights. I'm looking at the, um, capacity sheet. Obviously if we have more than we can hold, I think we're probably doing something right. So, um, Carson jumps out. They have more than they can hold. Clark, as you mentioned, Hartwell.
Oh, yeah, Hartwell.
Taft IT High School, Walnut Hills High School. Those are some of the biggest overages I see.
Great. And I feel confident that if we had the time this evening, you could go into any one of the schools in the entire district.
Right.
I just wanted something to say that's proof that they're living this.
Right.
Every single school without a doubt. So that's not our objective this evening, just to go through a quick process that you can use later with, with other schools. Okay? So we're just going to take a, so if we wanted to, um, really explore the possibilities in some of these schools this evening, can we pick three that we could really use as examples for how, how you want to think about, um, this whole process of looking at choice and possibility?
Well, I think it would be good to choose a neighborhood school and a magnet school. I think it would be good to have either also a high school and an elementary, just to have a mix of, out of that, uh, out of that list of seven.
Okay, great. So who should we put up on this first sticky? Or do we want to?
I would nominate, uh, just because I'm always so proud of the fact that they were able to achieve what they were able to achieve as a neighborhood school, Hartwell. Plus they're dealing with, uh, the growing Hispanic, uh, population, uh, within our city. So they're faced with that. We have had some great leadership there and, um, that's one I would nominate.
Okay, great. What else?
Oh, we need to find at least another kindergarten class four. So if we're going to do the exercise, let's do it for one we have an urgent need.
Great. Okay, next, last.
I really feel like geographic location has a lot to do with how we need to determine what we do. And therefore I want to put Carson up there because I know that they're so crowded because of the community surrounding it.
Okay, great. We've got our three, wonderful. First, uh, first task checked off, great.
Don't have any high schools.
I, I think you better add maybe Clark, just so that we are also addressing the Montessori piece and the high school piece.
Yeah.
So already we're, you know, having trouble limiting our list.
That's all right.
And proud to, proud to be in that situation.
That's, that's okay. You know, I don't have plans for like eight o'clock tomorrow morning. So, it's all good. Okay. There we go. So. You know that these are great examples because they're living in part or in whole the things you have said, right? They are, again, proof of your vision, your vision in the world. So, and the ideal, um, well, let me say that differently. Um, we know, obviously, that the 33,000 students in the school district are not going to these schools, right? There's other schools that they're going to and there's other amazing schools that can be, uh, attracting students. What we want to talk a little bit about is this selection of the way, the way kids go to schools and what's important. So I mentioned that we're going to hear from our, our subject matter experts to tell us a little bit about the, the, the process and, um, the history of how the system has been set up. The students who go to schools. Go to, right? But before we do that, what I'd really like to do is invite you to think about, and not out loud yet, but just privately. If you were thinking about, let's say, the top two issues, that you would want to be the filters for how students or their families or communities determine which school they go to. Right? Just give yourself just a moment alone to think about that. And then we're just going to generate some ideas about what is important when it comes to, um, selecting, right? So just a moment for everyone to have a, a bit to reflect on that. And some ideas. So what would you think when you're making this critical decision? What's it based on? Again, not the actual process, but just what's the filter it goes through?
Mr. Coons?
Um, I have location and reputation.
Location and?
Reputation.
And reputation. Okay?
Yeah, um, I probably could add, um, diverse makeup of the student body as well as the staff.
Okay.
So just a diverse makeup. And then I don't know if this goes with great reputation, but, um, just great results, you know? Great graduation results, great test results, um, the success of the students.
Okay. Let me adjust the question just a little bit. In your role, right, in your governance role, um, it's your responsibility to set forth policy about the way things get done. And so before we dig into, again, what exists right now, there's a governing philosophy too that guides the way those operations get mechanized. And so not as a parent, not as a student, not as a, a community member, but as a governing board, what do you think would be the critical issues to determine how you go about setting that policy? Does that, slightly different question?
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
It is.
So Elisa, do you have a thought on that before I? I don't want to, did I just put you on the spot?
Yeah, that's a different question because I think I was thinking from a parent's point of view. How do we think this through? And I think that's maybe where some of the answers are coming from.
Absolutely.
I think from this seat, I think about, um, equality of access.
Right, so that's one of your filters. It's one of your filters, great.
Yeah. Can I change that for a second?
Yep.
Equity.
Yes, thank you.
Equity, not equality. Yeah.
Did you say equality?
I did.
Okay.
And, uh, as it was being written up, I realized I mean equity.
Okay, got it. What else?
If I could add to the equity of access, also equal distribution of resources.
Okay.
Or equitable distribution.
Equitable distribution of resources.
Okay. What else?
I, I would add a, um, a variety of choices in programming.
Okay.
So the whole portfolio piece. We as a board have to guide the administration in, in that way.
Okay, helpful, great.
And attractiveness of, uh, scheduling. If there's all-day preschool, if there's after-school programming.
Okay?
So help me, uh, I don't know how to word it, but so I'm just going to speak out and you help me figure it out, how to, how to capture it. So if I think about what would be one of the factors that, that I would have to filter through is, well, what would be attractive for parents to be engaged and the community to be engaged? Because for a successful school here in this district, we need to have both. So.
Okay, so you want, um, you want a system that in and of itself creates engagement?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to put process, is this still more process? Versus disenfranchises? So is it important to you? I mean, I, I don't want to get this wrong.
Well, I just, I feel that, that when we look at all the other factors like location and, you know, curriculum or whatever, it, it needs to have the capacity to fully engage the family, the parent, the student, but also the community. And I guess because I'm looking at it as we are a community learning center district. And we are a district where we've seen that communities have a voice. So parents have a voice, families have a voice, and it needs to be a school that offers that opportunity. So, you know, it's rather than just thinking, well, this school is doing great in California. I really don't care if the parents here in Cincinnati don't feel like they're going to be able to get engaged in that system and businesses and communities will be able to tap in, so.
Okay, so that, that could go either way. It could be the school itself or it could be the process.
Correct.
Okay, that's useful.
Let me start, I want other to, someone thinking about our seat here as well as kind of how it.
Should we use the mic?
Oh, sorry, I was far away, so I wasn't blocking Daniel. Um, something around like, ensuring, and this is again, I'm probably saying it as I'm thinking it, like, but something around like consistent and clear and transparent communication from at all levels, like that the schools are on the same page as the district office, as we are. Like everybody's giving the same information.
Okay.
No concise way of putting that.
Got it. Got it. So it's not going to help your cause, um, if it's not something that, um, everyone knows about or everyone can understand or you have the right communications about it. That's going to be an important filter that this is going to go through.
This may, this may be the, the equitable resources, but the single most important thing is to have the best possible staff in every, in every school. So I mean, the, the quality of instruction as it pertains to the delivery of the instruction and also the curriculum. So I, it's, it's a resource, but I, it's the single most important piece, as, as is, you know, the site leadership. Having a great principal. So I think the quality of personnel, I, I'm not sure how to say that. I just think that needs to be emphasized more than just resources.
Okay.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. And when I mentioned the equitable distribution of resources, that absolutely includes school leadership, school budget, you know, everything that kids need in order to achieve. you know, everything that kids need in order to achieve. But absolutely, um, you know, recruiting and retaining and the, the best qualified teachers and school leadership possible.
Okay.
Well, probably for me, uh, and I was thinking about, and this kind of triggered a thought, and I think it's appropriate, guaranteed enrollment beyond the application process might be something to consider. And supplemental co-curricular activities to supplement the primary curriculum.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Got a good list. I don't, I want to make sure that's, that's okay. Beyond day?
That's fine.
Just because I'm running out of room for it.
The manics.
Wonderful. So we mentioned we'll have conversation, then we'll hear some subject matter experts in the room who are going to help us understand the, the kind of on-the-ground work that's happening right now and what it looks like. So what I'd like to do is, um, I think Janet, yeah, that's going to talk to us about, um, if I can pull this up, the history. My apologies. Is, um, going to talk to us about the application process tab and, um, the enrollment guidelines. So what's in your notebook that I'm sure you've taken a look at? She's just going to highlight some of that data for us. And so as you're listening to, not only.
Somebody is. Not historian.
Yeah, historian.
Janet's either going to do that or she's going to pass down the role.
Pass the baton.
Daryl, you might be in trouble. You're the last one in the row. So, so the idea here is that as you are listening, right, if you hear something that gives you a question based on what you just said in terms of, these are the filters that, that our process, our good process has to go through. It has to meet some of these thresholds, right? That's what you want to listen for. So someone hopefully is going to help us go through that in terms of where the district's been and how it got to the point of the process that it uses to grant access to schools. And, um, so that process of getting there, that part of the history, and then that, um, generally how things work right now.
Darwish, will you be leaving that up as we go through this? Great. Thank you.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At a really high level, let's just take a quick time, trip back in time. And, and Cincinnati Public Schools has a rich tradition of honoring choice. Learned really very early on that that's what our parents and our community value. And, um, our magnet schools, which is one means of off, of offering choice in Cincinnati Public Schools, the first was established in 1973. And while other communities at that time were still roiling from, um, the divisiveness of forced busing, Cincinnati Public Schools decided to try another means, a voluntary means of addressing racial isolation. And that's how our first magnet schools got started. And they became, as we all know, some of them in particular, exceedingly popular. So that's, that's a tradition that our community and our parents hold dear. And, um, we have tried to improve it over the years. We've had several groups, past board members, but also parents really embrace the challenge of improving the, the system of magnet schools. And in relatively recent history, another big effort started in 2007. Prior to 2007, Cincinnati Public Schools tried to balance racially and by gender all of our magnet schools. But then in 2007, the Supreme Court ruled that that was, that could no longer be the primary way of enrolling our schools. And so that opened the door to, um, several groups, including parents, who became very passionate looking at the, the current means of enrollment and trying to improve it. Even before the Supreme Court decision, Cincinnati Public Schools was one of the very, very few, um, school districts in the nation to use the first-come-first-serv enrollment system for magnet schools. Most school districts across the nation use a lottery. Our parents, um, many of them, not all, but many of them really feel that first-come-first-serve gives them a little bit more power over their, their destiny of enrollment. It is not a perfect system, which is why we're probably here today. Um, magnets, magnet schools, um, especially those that are, um, um, overcapacity and the most popular, people show up in droves. So there've been several parent, um, and other community committees to try to improve that. And I won't go into detail in the history, but I will say that just as the board is looking at what are the, the big buckets, the parameters, the parents wrestled with that too. In one case, there was a rather large parent involvement initiative that was facilitated by the Community Building Institute at Xavier University. And really, the, their big three were promoting diversity, family-friendly, and equity of access. So that's the, the, the big background. We have a rather detailed, um, enrollment guide, the, uh, for, for magnet, magnet schools. I don't know to what extent the board wants us to go into the enrollment procedures right now for magnet schools or high schools, uh, high school schools. But basically, it's a first-come-first-served with one exception at the most popular schools. Although at one point in time, the administration recommended a full, flat lottery. A predecessor board in 2010 decided that they wanted to, um, honor, to, to implement a modified lottery for kindergarten. And so the, in the lowest-performing schools of, in Cincinnati Public Schools, they have a special lottery for kindergarten seats in which 30% of the most popular seats are reserved for, um, a special priority application for students from those schools. Those schools are determined by their performance index scores.
Yeah.
Is that what's desired? Okay, thank you.
I have to try this again. Is that, um, am I there now? Are you?
No.
Okay. Um, great. So that gives you an outline of kind of what the approach has, has been. When you, when you were listening to that and thinking about what you articulated as the filters, does it rise to that level? I mean, is it meeting that threshold? And maybe a better way to ask that, because again, in our 90 minutes tonight, what we're going to do is identify the issues you want to come back to, right? So I can imagine, and I'm not to, you'll decide what's the best process, but I can imagine you might want to have subgroups saying, we're going to work on this. We're going to answer that bucket of questions. Another group's going to answer this next bucket of questions kind of thing. So when you, when you hear what you just heard, when you think about what you articulated, can we name some questions that you might want to explore later? Or, or maybe you don't?
Yeah, one, one for me would be, uh, how do you deal with the equity of access, uh, piece? And when the Supreme Court handed down their mandate determining that magnet school enrollments, uh, were, couldn't be based on race or gender, how does that affect our equity mission as relates to what the board governs over? And what are the most popular? Uh, and I know the answer to this, but what are perceived to be the most popular magnet schools?
Okay, great.
I hope I'm responding appropriately. I know we're kind of brainstorming things, but basically, the enrollment process needs to be examined, I think. Maybe I'm stating the obvious, but the enrollment process?
The total process.
For magnet schools, I'm sorry. I mean, looking at the history, full lottery versus partial lottery, I'm seeing that at one point it was recommended that parents were required to take a tour of the building. Before that happened, the administration said that wasn't a good idea. But just so, we have, you know, we have a policy that determines how enrollment happens and that's obviously something we need to look at.
Well, yes and no. I mean, and what wasn't discussed was that in the past, the, uh, central office, uh, oversay, uh, oversaw the magnet school process. And now it's the schools. So it's a very different dynamic. And even though there's a policy that oversees, you know, the enrollment process, there's always that undercurrent that, you know, the principals are able to do something that, you know, goes against our, our, you know, tenet of equity. And that's something that hasn't really been talked about.
So should I frame that as a question of, is it central office or?
Yeah.
Just as a question for, they might want to poll later.
Well, central office or the schools or maybe subgroups of the schools. And, and for instance, when Alyssa and Jillian and I were in Milwaukee, I went to a session on their magnet schools and how they, they work out their issues. And they're a much tighter group. The principals work with each other, even on enrollment issues. And when there, and when there are problems and one school is overflowing and another isn't, and they have both neighborhood and magnet Montessori schools, the principals get together and try to sort it out. Where do they live? Who has some openings? What can we do? You know, that kind of thing. So I don't know that, and I'm just throwing that out. I'm not saying we have to do that. I'm not sure it's an either/or, but there can be other structures that work.
Well, if I understood, if I understood your question, I guess it's the, it's asking the questions that are going to allow us to find the answers, right? So to me is, in this process, at what point do we listen to current parents who have gone through the process and received their input? Past parents who probably now matured through the process and can give us input? And future parents and, you know, try to break some of those maybe, um, how to say, expectations, whether wrong or right, that they have before they have even entered the process. So, so to me would be, how are we going to engage with the parents and get that input?
But, but we're looking at a new system.
Right.
So we're looking at more access for more schools.
Right.
But are you, can I just ask a clarifying question? Are you saying that, um, a question you have, given this and what you just heard, that a question for you would be, where does the parent almost, um, my word, not yours, but where does the parent counseling come into play in this process? Is that what you're saying?
Well, input, I, I, you know, it's, it could definitely be a brand-new system, but.
But we shouldn't develop it in a vacuum.
Yeah, but we have only one perspective. I have only one perspective. And if I've never enrolled my kid in a magnet Montessori school or other sort of, I don't know what they went through. And, and so therefore, I think as a district, how do you collectively? Because I, I, I can see us trying to reinvent, you know, spin our wheels and things that have been tried before, at least from my point of view. Maybe there's more history and experience. But from my point of view is, I don't, you know, I'd rather take some time to explore how parents have felt comfortable or uncomfortable and then form some sort of pathway to, I'm going to get to a decision, rather than think, well, let's try this because I might be wasting my resources.
Great, great.
I think that question though is, to whom do you listen? And how, who are the experts? Because you've got the parent piece, the participatory. You've also got our own experts that, that advise us as to what to do.
I'm assuming we're asking, but I'm assuming.
I'm saying it's, there's a bunch of people to listen to in this.
So to clarify, I'm assuming that we're asking all the experts. At some point, I feel we need to ask the parents. I'm just throwing it.
Absolutely.
Okay, can I, can I just put, um, a mini time on this? Just because I mentioned at the beginning that as you all are having your conversation, so there's two things going on. We're trying to elicit the wisdom around this table, if you will, and also bring in the wisdom of the subject matter and history that might inform the conversation. So at this juncture, is there anything, Janet, I'm sorry to look at you again, but is there anything that would be useful for the group to know in the way of, um, how parents have been engaged in the past? And.
Can I, can I kind of interject while she's waiting? In your background and history, it stays hidden. 2008, a parent-initiated group called itself the Parent Review Committee, recommending interim adjustment in the first-come-first-served process, including the moving the general enrollment sign-up date to weekday. So there has been some level of parental engagement before. I think the only, uh, challenge to that is that you have some parents in this district that's always going to be proactive. Then you have some parents that are not going to be proactive based on the experience, uh, pro or con. But I think parental involvement, parental input could assist us in attempting to approach this again versus the lottery, versus we the first serve, first-come-first-served. And we attempted to create a hybrid process. And I think now because that hasn't yielded the type of results that we were looking for, we're right back where we were.
Okay.
So I, oh, go ahead.
I, I'd just like to add though, I mean, we wouldn't have any of these problems that we're trying to confront now if indeed we found a way to expand the number of quality seats, the number of choices available. And I think to the heart of it is this higher expectation by this board that somehow we can do that, that somehow we can expand the quality seats and, and fulfill the needs in the marketplace that exist. And I think, for me, I really want that on the list because for me, I mean, it's just, my good, dear friends, as soon as I was elected to the board and they saw the first Fairview thing, they, they said, "Eve, for God's sake, just make another Fairview." I mean, it's, so there's this concept that we can somehow do this. And I think that that has to be a primary responsibility to expand the, the quality seats, whatever they may be, and who knows?
I don't think that's an either/or. I think it's an either. I think we have to expand the number of seats, but to board member now at this point, we also need a better system for how you access those seats. And I think I'd be curious, like when I was reading the CBI report and they said they engaged like 80 different stakeholders, throughout the whole thing, I was just wondering, what are the demographics of those stakeholders, right? Who's giving this information? When I hear, when I was reading through the report of feeling like you had some power with the first-come-first-served, and I know, um, Ms. Walsh reiterated that, that quote, my worry in reading that is you have some power. Only th, those people who already have power in our system have that power. And the people who are powerless in our system don't have access to that power. I mean, we know there's only a certain demographic who are able to camp out. And so that's just reinforcing those people who already have power in our system. And so I think if we're talking about issues of equity and diversity, I mean, I think we just have to look at the demographics pre-Supreme Court decision and post at these schools. And if you just, you know, we had requested that information, we're able to get it. I mean, the demographics shifted significantly at these schools to being a much less diverse place. But interestingly, the, um, ratings did not. I mean, these schools were some of our highest-performing schools when they were incredibly diverse economically and racially, and they still are now. And so I just want to make sure that that is out there as well, that we know we can have very diverse schools with an equitable way to access them and still have high-performing schools. So I do think since that's on our list, it needs to be the questions we're asking. I also, the question that, when I was hearing the presentation and reading through this around the hybrid system we have right now, the lottery being only for those kids in the lowest-performing schools, I don't think it hits what we were saying about the variety of choices. If the purpose of magnets is so every parent has a variety of choices and can choose the school that best fits their child, we're actually only giving the lottery choice to those, to a tiny group of those parents. So even if, you know, I know we have folks on the board even who have, who know people who live in Hyde Park and could go to Hyde Park School, which has the highest performing rating index, but that school isn't the right fit for their kid, so they have to go camp out at a magnet school. So I don't think we're hitting our actual objective of giving all of our parents choices in our current hybrid system, which is a long way of saying. choices in our current hybrid system, which is a long way of saying. I think that that's one of the questions we have to examine is.
I agree with everything that you said. I also think we have to be careful, two things, what we actually mean by diversity, and what would make our school system more diverse. What does that really mean racially and, and economically? If you're really striving for diversity, where is the largest majority of our, of our population? And how do you now make that less extreme regarding the demographics? But more particularly, I think the extreme for us is this camp-out piece. I think the point that I would like to know is, I'd like to know how many of our children go to our neighborhood schools, I think we know this answer, but go to our neighborhood schools, and then how many of them go to magnet schools. I worry about making sure, and I'm going to cite a conversation I had with Betsy Shank yesterday, and I, and I know that this predates this board, what do you do about our neighborhood schools regarding those being schools of choice? Because we immediately separate and create two tiers in our district the minute we say we're choosing the neighbor, the magnet sign-up versus saying, hey, why aren't you signing up for the neighborhood schools? I mean, and I know it was, I don't know, I think former board members said something about all of our schools need to be schools of choice and stop creating this, this dichotomy, this two-tier system that we've done. And I think the superintendent and her folks for a number, at least a half a dozen years, have invested the money and the effort, and certainly the taxpayers invested the, the FMP piece to make our neighborhood schools more than competitive. So I just, I don't want us to overstate the camping out. I don't want us to lose sight of people, most people get their choice. We have to make it a valid choice for them to be able to make and feel like their kids are comfortable there. I just, I don't want us to have the extreme determine the debate or discussion.
Well, also, those who are on our original list, right?
Yeah.
PRM, or, you know, Westwoods, we have in Hartwell, a number of neighborhood schools on our list. I think that's part of the conversation.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt. I'm a little mindful of time, because I mentioned you had a really ambitious agenda to get to this evening in terms of just truly naming the questions and nothing else. So you have a great list of questions, actions that really drive a good conversation about shaping what you want to shape. Janet, before we move on to the next topic, is there something else that would be useful just to close out this part of the conversation? Help us stay grounded in kind of what has been too, as you stretch for new ideas?
Want to say that, from my opinion, you can never have too much parent involvement in this discussion. And that, from my experience in being involved in some of the parent engagement over the years, parents care deeply about this, and they have wrestled with the same kinds of issues that the board is wrestling with. But parents move on as their kids move on, and we have, you know, parents that haven't sunk their teeth in this currently in the district and prospective parents. So I don't know if it gets to the bigger issue, but I, that, that window, I think it's important, that thought is good to pursue, from my opinion.
That's a good point.
Great. So, we are a couple, a couple points in. The next topic, then, that we're going to move on to quickly, is looking at, you know, you're looking at two sides of the coin, just like you've said. You're looking at how to make sure your incoming process is exactly the way you want it to be, that reflects what you say you're about in the world. And then you also want to make sure that, that you are this incredible place of choice, right? So it's, it's two parts of this conversation that are really important. So the next part that we'll look at is the tab in your book that says capacity versus enrollment. So we have listed some schools here. Close that down for me. And I think if you look, if I'm not mistaken, do you mind if I set it on here? If you look at, in the capacity tab, and you look at the last couple of sheets.
I don't have anything in my capacity tab.
Oh, yeah, do you mind?
No, she doesn't have anything.
I just don't have it, Buck.
This is, I'll give you the rest of it too, but that's.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
That's what's going to direct people's attention to next.
You want to share mine?
Oh, sure.
It was on purpose. I know it was on purpose.
This, I know everybody probably hasn't had a chance to really dig into all of this, but if you look at this, you see that the, 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 her team have put together numbers so that you could look at, again, capacity, enrollment, and where folks are over and under. And certainly, that's one metric to say, these are schools of destination. I mean, like we said before, there are many others. But for the, for our purposes right now, let's take a look at those you've just identified, and we can write up here where they are. So can some, if you don't mind, can somebody just call out where Carson is?
Number-wise?
Number-wise, if they're over, under?
Hundred and eighty-two, over.
Okay. And what about Clark?
One oh five. Hundred and five, over.
Over. Okay. And Fairview?
Sixty-six.
Okay. And Hartwell?
One thirty-four.
Is also over? All right. So, you know, that gives us a really clear picture, that yes, you said, they're, they're expressing things that we want to see in the world, and obviously, families are saying that too. I don't know, is that a clear, can we make that, that deduction? So the, the next part, looks like we're going to lose our computer here.
Jillian, while you're doing that, these were the capacities put out by the FMP, but, and they always said we could do at least 10% over, so you could add 10% in addition to the actual capacity. Then we had to go back and retrofit. For instance, in Hartwell, we added three classrooms, because there's no way they could be 134 over without the addition of three classrooms that were non-FMP funded. But Bill Mooring and our carpenters went out and created it. And then at Carson, we did, Carson had, I believe it was eight extended learning areas, and we were so fortunate that during the FMP, we put these large areas that there were four classrooms around. In many cases, we walled those in. So that's what's really saved us. So I just want you to know that children aren't sitting in hallways. I mean, we did make, even though I'd love to balance it out more, so we did go back and try to adjust on a lot of these.
And Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, too, that just, the enrollment piece compared to, or the current enrollment compared to the FMP, aside some of the retrofitting that you all have done in great ways, the, the other piece is that we can't assume that there are that percentage of classrooms empty, because with, like, special units, it isn't that, the square footage does not translate the same way the enrollment translates.
You're right. Some of your buildings that look under-enrolled, like Douglas and Evanston Academy, that look like they're, well, Douglas, 238 under-enrolled, we're putting additional, we're starting that Stride units when we're bringing back the partial hospitalization children in those buildings. And then Evanston has a lot of MD classrooms with six children. So even though the numbers look low, they may almost be out of rooms.
Right. I was thinking in terms of a friend at Woodward, where it's like, it's less than a thousand, or a thousand under, or whatever it was, the reality is there's probably not one or two empty classrooms there because of the special units.
Yes.
Well, then my question would be, how can we get an accurate count? I mean, how do we actually know?
And that's a good question for us.
That's how it's guesswork.
What I was going to ask for is, like, which is based on state seats and everything. So this does give us a baseline, but in order to be more accurate, it would be helpful to have a modified list.
Yeah, and I think it's important for several reasons to have that. I think it's important for the community to know that we have the new Stride program at Douglas. You know, where these pockets are that can, these empty seats or perceived empty seats can become some high-performing seat of some sort. But we don't have a good grasp on, you know, what capacity we actually have. And I know that's, I know that's, you know, just significant to dive into every single school building, every single special circumstance and that. But I think it's valuable to figure that information out.
Also, part of that, too, is the, the whole art and music piece. You know, would you be overcrowded? If you, you're not overcrowded if you can take away the art in the music room. Well, that's, that's not necessarily an option. So I mean, this, I think it would, I think, I think it's asking a lot of the administration to try to figure this out for us. But I think we do need deeper knowledge. This is, I think, as Mr. Kuhn said, is, is the baseline to start from. But then there are all these caveats.
Go by and make notes on this.
However you, that, I mean.
Because you're right. For instance, Hartwell, the Deb Chambers of the LSDMC Chair sent us a note saying, "I'd like to move all the seventh and eighth graders out of her building to get more space," which, of course, will move them in, you know, with open enrollment into Loughlin and Reading, and we lose 100 of our children. But I don't think she realizes, you know, we've added the additional rooms.
Right.
And I think we would also, I'm sure this is partly top of mind for Superintendent Renner, but like, some of them, you know, like, sans only shows that it's like four kids over or dated or one of them, when we know that that's because there's a waiting list and they cap it. So I think we'd also want to know, where do we have waiting lists at, at these schools too, that's not reflected in the straight-up numbers?
Yeah, so that's a huge question. The capacity is, is a huge question.
Two, prior to the big strategic decision to move most of the seventh and eighth graders out of the elementaries, and then a strategic piece too, from, you know, down the road, if there is indeed anything that somewhat resembles a preschool promise in our neighborhood schools, where we want to maintain the capacity of having a couple of opportunities for preschool if, if that ever comes to fruition. So there's lots of strategic decisions along the way.
Was there anything else in terms of just factual information we need to get into the conversation to inspire questions, or are we good in that area? Janet or Superintendent Ronan? All right. So.
Sorry.
Yeah, please.
I thought of it late. The school expansion quick study, I mean, maybe I'm getting ahead myself, but to me, that is the other factual list we have that helps influence these conversations. And it's like page 85 in the binder. Sorry, I don't know what section or whatever, but.
It is under the tab CPS Magnet Seat Expansion Ideas.
That's where we're going now?
Before the pictures.
And before the pictures.
Okay, so I'm jumping ahead, sorry.
But that's great, because it goes right to the next.
This, this may not have anything to do with the conversation, but I would be interested in all, what factors, Mary, affects enrollment, increase or decrease, and how often is this enrollment capacity list updated?
Oh, the enrollment list is very up to date. We actually, but the capacity, I have to say, Jen Wagner and Bill Mooring have worked trying to put together what the capacities are. Every time Mr. Mooring goes back and adds a classroom, we try to add that. Although, I believe when I asked Ms. Wagner for it, she gave me the FMP numbers. When, we really need a notation, add it three classrooms to that 475. She added the, it's a 450 building. I think that she added the extra 25 to, but then she didn't add the three additional classrooms.
Now, I think my point was, though, what factors can we really, really use that would affect enrollment on a consistent basis? And I mean, it's getting a little bit into the weeds, but it might be something that we need to keep in mind, because schools have a tendency to fluctuate throughout the year, I'm sure, but what are the factors that cause that fluctuation?
And I think something that might help figure that out would, maybe to see trends. Like, if there's one of these sheets for the past six years, you just tabulate the over or under number and see, okay, has Fairview gone like this? Has Carson steadily increased? And then we could look at historical things that have happened. Like, I know in the past boards, there's a lot of conversations about housing projects that got closed down and how that moved populations and.
Right, that's a point I was going to make.
Good point. Like, Fairview's fairly steady. If you look back, it'll be at 700 the past six or seven years. Carson.
Cuback, when Cuback was going.
Yeah, yeah. Carson, actually, at one time, Carson had 350 students in it, and it was the first year of the Ed Choice vouchers, and they dropped from 550 to 350. And now they're at seven-something. So Carson's the one that's been like the yo-yo that really dropped, and then a lot of those youngsters returned from the Ed Choice vouchers in the parochial schools. So that's probably been the, the most aberrant of all the, the movements and trends has been Carson.
You're right, because you do have to anticipate the charter piece, successful or unsuccessful charters, that enrollment.
The vouchers, the closing of a school, things that sort of.
Well, and I also think those things are important to note as we, you know, want to recruit some of our kids back to our district. I mean, this is really getting in the weeds, but where there are charters and that, that are not high-performing, where we know we're doing a better job, and how do we target those kids and bring them back? But if we don't know how many seats we have or don't have, then how could you do that, you know? So again, I think the capacity issue, and I really like what you mentioned about trends, you know? And I think just because our city and our urban district is very transitional, our population is very transitional, we have to keep our ear to the ground and be very consistent with learning why our students are moving, or if there's one school that has a huge increase in enrollment, and what those reasons are.
Great, okay.
And changing population.
And change.
If, if some of the demographics are correct, a lot of folks are moving back into the city that have families or want to start families, and how do we keep them here? And what neighborhoods are they being attracted to? So being responsive to those demographics.
Well, too, I think it's also the perception of how well the school is doing. So if folks are, are thinking Carson's doing great, well, we're going to rush to Carson, or, or vice versa, or Hartwell, or, you know, what have you. So I just said all that again to say how critical I think it is to talk about the capacity issue, as well as what those trends are, and really understanding that.
Great, okay, good. Another really good set of questions to go back and understand the capacity issue, right? So you have two big buckets right now. You can talk about access, you can talk about capacity, and you have some questions to really drive those conversations deep. The next thing then we're going to look at is, we had a foreshadowing just a moment ago. Thank you. So let me just preface this by saying, you, I know you will look at your whole system as a system, right? So we're going to go through kind of a manufactured exercise to dig deep and see what can be done. But it's going to be constantly school level, back at system level, school level, because you can't change that and not affect the whole system, right? So I realize that we're a little artificial in what we're doing, but hopefully this will give you a process that you can just pick up with the others, with the other places you're possibly considering, and you'll go back from system to school, system to school, right? Okay. So let's take a look, then, at what's been provided for you. Again, the tab is the third from the back, and it is the CPS Magnet Seat Expansion Ideas. And, you know, this, I think, fair to say, and please interject where it's not what, what is intended here, but I think this is just evidence of a brainstorming, creative session that the leadership team had. Just get some ideas out on the table, right? Just get the creative juices flowing. Am I, is it correct to say these aren't recommendations necessarily, they're just inspiration?
They are not recommendations. It was assignment made at a board meeting to look at some ideas for magnet seat expansion. So we tried to think out of the box. Some of these are wild and crazy, while others may be more practical, but I didn't want to rule anything out.
That's great.
So we put them all down. And in fact, when we get to it, I do have a number 15 that we even came up with after we sent the visors over to the board office.
Great.
I can hardly wait. Thanks, Mary.
Great. A couple of minutes just to take a look at the list, see if, in looking at the schools where you know, you know, it's likely that you really do have some interest that is not currently able to be served, are there any implications from these ideas in those contexts? That's the next conversation we can have. And then we'll talk about pros and cons of those things. So don't, you don't, you don't need to edit yourself. Hey, we could do, just throw it out there, and we'll, we'll get it up here, and then you'll plumb through it later and, and everything else as well.
I think on the, on the brainstorming piece of this, and I'm sure there's others as well, but it would be, from a cost-benefit analysis, I'd like to know what you'd get for it. Meaning, okay, we could fix this particular school, but what do you get for that, for that estimated dollar? Do you get six more classrooms? Do you get a full school? And then, of course, everything has to also be staffed. And then, of course, everything has to also be staffed. So, I mean, I think it'd be great to try to have a better understanding of if you did some of these things, what do you get for each of them?
Great, so I, for expansions, you're going to need to know what the return on investment is, what the dollars are per seat.
I wish I'd said that, that's much better than the way I said it.
And just a rule of thumb, when we were closing schools a number of years ago, the overhead is about a million dollars for a school. By the time the principal, the secretary, the plan operator, the lunchroom lady, the custodian, the transportation, and the utilities, that's before you do any teachers or anything, just, it's about a million dollars in overhead when you open a school. And that's, was pretty close when we looked at it over several years. That's a pretty accurate number.
And that's why we went with larger schools.
Exactly.
So, I mean, it would also, yeah, is.
Because if you had 10 smaller schools, there's 10 million right off the back in caring costs.
Yeah. The scale thing.
Yep. Okay. I think that ties kind of the last two conversations maybe together, is I'd be curious to be also thinking beyond just the property we own, but maybe bringing in some folks from the city or from the, and/or from the port to talk about what properties they might have. We know it's just so closely tied together, the success of our cities, success of our neighborhoods, and having a successful school, to the question of where are these young families moving? I think some of us could rattle off neighborhoods right now where we have lots of young families, where those families are not feeling like their schools, their neighborhood schools when they want to send their kids to you, so it's very much in the city's interest to be working closely with us on this question. And I'm sure they have a lot of information on trends and data and of what our demographics are and where they're shifting, and so could help us really target.
I totally agree with that, and also, it's not a bad idea to look at some of the parochial facilities that are out there, because many of them.
Yes.
Have space available. I can think of one even in my own neighborhood that, you know, they're going to, they're in the marketplace trying to get more and more people, but maybe, I mean, it would be one of the great ironies if we could all actually work together on that, as we do with auxiliary services anyway, there's a great working relationship.
Mm-hmm.
And there might be facilities, as well as some of these charter facilities, wouldn't be a bad idea to have that kind of list.
Yeah, I think this list is great. I'm just struggling a little bit, I'm having a little bit of a hard time, because it's like we're attacking the issue of particular schools. We're into the inequitable distribution again, because we haven't said a single word about a neighborhood school. I mean, you know, so it's, I just want to be clear, if we're trying to figure out a fix to these particular schools, great, I think we need to do that, but we then have a whole nother set of concern.
So the notion of, you know, how do you eat an elephant once in one bite at a time, silly stuff, it's the kind of that whole idea here. You're biting off a chunk, and you're going to look at the whole system.
I agree.
And you're going to bite off a chunk, and you're going to look at the whole system. So when you think about, when you think about expanding your seats, you necessarily have to think about them place-based, but then you also have to think about the whole context to get at those other things back on page one that you said.
Completely.
What we're about. So it is both, you're going to have to kind of navigate that tension, I think, that's what I would offer.
And you're correct, Erica, this was done when the campouts were occurring at Fairview, when we were told to deal with magnet seats, and you're right. So there's nothing on here about neighborhood, because that wasn't the assignment in October.
Correct, I agree.
So that whole piece is missing.
I agree. And I do think that, I can't wait to hear number 15 though, but I think the 14 things that are listed are very innovative and extremely creative.
Well, I can tell you at 15, because we knew that John Parker was half-empty, and they are interested in having a Madisonville school, we were thinking, why not make it a pre-K to 12 for Madisonville children, and it would fill it up? So I mean, it's just, we just threw that out there, we've had no discussions with anyone, but that was a way to go from 250 and fill the building with 650.
Again, a very novel idea.
As well as a school within a school, some of these places that are particularly under-enrolled, if indeed there's space, and that speaks to the cost, if there's already kind of a principal in place or some of the other services available.
There wouldn't be a cost to that.
You could grow maybe a charter, or you could grow another choice within our district, within that school, and it might even ultimately grow so that the existing school kind of goes out of way. But I know my alma mater, there's two different schools happening there.
Same with our Hyde Park and Gifted Academy.
Exactly. And that does speak to the scale piece, which our MBA superintendent always likes to talk to us about financially.
Of course, I didn't, you know, with John Parker, like I said, we've had no discussion, and you know, since that neighborhood's very active, I don't want them to think we're doing something to them without discussion, it's just one of those out of the box ideas.
Yeah.
Certainly nothing firm.
I think it's a great idea, and I.
One idea to even get a little more into that high school idea is to expand Pleasant Ridge Montessori to, in the upper grades to that school, to have the 7 through 12 children from Pleasant Ridge Montessori matriculate over to Montessori High School in their neighborhood.
Capture that.
And that would take some of the pressure off of Clark.
So we are.
Going off on a tangent and backtracking.
We never do that.
The city demographics piece, I'm just wondering, because I would love to see like population densities by neighborhood, but do they even do that? I mean, isn't it kind of all based on census, or is there a year by year, you know, like Pleasant Ridge is expanding or that, or every two years?
Oh, I'm sure the city has that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we were able to see diversity of census track, like our neighborhoods track and all that. So we're just curious during the election, so I'm sure.
That's another thing we need to look at, and that's the city, as you mentioned, the city and the district working together on that.
We're at about 720.
So what that mean?
It's time for supper.
Back.
And I wanted, I want to interject at this time and say you're doing a wonderful job facilitating.
My gosh.
So let's give yourself a hand, Julie.
So what I thought we might do, we're not going to do this now, but I'm just going to put it as a set aside that you might do as an exercise to just keep you moving down this track, which is if you take those ideas and apply them into these schools, and then think, okay, what's the, what's the positive, what's that going to get us, and what's the negative? That'll just, we're going to park that for now just because of timing, but that's where I thought we might go, given a, given a different set of questions that arose. So I guess, you know, in my understanding of the things that you have talked about tonight, and what I understood from reading the minutes, and just what needed to be done, my understanding is that there's a timeline here of what you want to address. There are some kind of priority issues, like wow, we got to get on it, because this or that or the other, and then there's some that are, you know, just your long-term strategic planning and the way you want to think. So I thought it might be useful just to name those things that are short and long-term. We don't have to put dates to them, or people don't have to sign on the dotted line for them, but just, if we can just get a sense of that, I think that'll help you the next time you come together about this too. Does that sound?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah.
And to your point, the upcoming enrollment process or plan.
Okay, the upcoming enrollment process?
Upcoming application.
For high school enrollment, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, so speaking to the deadline that you.
Right, right, that's our next deadline.
There are some parents that are concerned about the upcoming timeline for the application process.
Janet has something.
Can I just, as you're thinking about that, we do have publications that are going to print.
Okay.
That have already been, that are already in the works and print deadlines. Our magnet process for 1516, rules are set, they've been communicated, everybody's gotten this book, and high school, or high schools of choice.
Okay.
The book is also written under the current set of guidelines for 1516.
Okay.
And that is set, that application cycle is set for the third week, February 17th, so it would be very, very late to try to make changes for the 1516 school year, is what I'm trying to say.
If we need to, if it doesn't.
Yeah, the point's well taken, and I think also Mrs. Bates has a suggestion about what, when she comes back, she can share another opportunity to do it, maybe not changing the processes, but I know that, too, there's an interest in, in expanding the choices or expanding, trying to address some of the issues regarding space in time for next year, which may not impact the process.
Just to say, you know, we have introduced new schools with a special communication program.
There you go.
But just the need.
Mr. Coons? I think Alex has.
Yeah, sorry, short term wise, I think maybe some homework would be to like come back with some of the data that we mentioned, like the capacity chart, add a column for like actual capacity, and then a historical page to go with it, maps from the city if we have them, based on population densities. And I noticed, looking at the maps that were provided, I'm sorry.
I do, actually, Gillian, I have, just because I'm used to board meetings, I have the four assignments already written down, so you don't have to worry.
Have Superintendent, I mean, we're going to produce these notes so that, I mean, everything that's been mentioned.
No, I just have the assignments, notes on the capacity you want a page due to the retrofitting, you want the waiting list for the magnet schools that currently we have right now, enrollment trends for the last five years by school, census data, census data, density by neighborhood, although I don't know if that is as helpful as our actual, you know, every dot represents a child, this might be more valuable, because it might be densely populated with senior citizens, so I don't know. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's what we want by demographic, right?
We need it by age or something.
I would want to compare the trends in both. So the trends in our school enrollment, and also the trends in neighborhood population change. It'll be a lot to do, but that seems like a great side by side.
Well, and I think there are other, not necessarily assignments, but other pieces of information that we were interested in having, that's what I meant by the list, rather than an assignment, whether it's, you know, the return on the investment regarding if we spend $3 million, what do you get? Knowing also, I think it's been mentioned in previous meetings, other properties besides buildings that would be available. I mean, Catholic schools, which, I mean, where are they, and what's their capacity? There's lots of stuff that isn't necessarily been an assignment, but it's information that has been, request for information.
So to it, I think what former Coons is talking about, I, and I don't, our administration is, I don't want you recreating the wheel, like I'm going to guess somebody in economic development in the city.
Yeah, they do.
Has that information. And so if we go to them.
Right.
And we start that partnership, that conversation, you can be talking through.
If you could give us a name, that would be so valuable.
It's the new, he's just been appointed, and indeed, that's supposed to be a topic for our next ACES, and yet he's sort of tried to beg off since he is brand new, but they would have that material for us, as a trade and development person.
I have one more specific thing, and this is a CPS assignment, these, the maps, I don't see like SCPA or, well, maybe high schools aren't in here, you know, the Montessori high schools were, but I think there's a couple magnets missing from the magnet maps.
Well, technically, high schools are high schools of choice, so they're not really magnet. So the 15 high schools are all high schools of choice, there's.
Except for the Montessori high schools?
No, they're all high schools of choice. See, that's what it gets, the verbiage gets all confusing. So then there's 42 elementary schools, about a dozen of them are magnet. But you're right, I mean, SCPA kind of falls into both, it's a high school of choice, but at the elementary, it's a magnet. And it's a lottery, just, you know, and it's a lottery at high school completely across the board for the high schools of choice.
Okay.
Why at the elementary schools, it's the first come, first served, and the modified lottery. So I can see how parents are confused, because quite frankly, you know, I also have to look in the booklet before, whenever I get questions, before I misspeak, because I'm afraid I, from memory, I might say something incorrectly. So the administration is not opposed to streamlining processes, because.
It's a long term.
I was going to say.
The long term would be. Streamlining processes, I mean, if it's confusing for us, you're going to.
Clearly.
For parents.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think along with that, as a long-term initiative, would be the communication and how we, you know, and get that to the community. How do we inform the community about the process? I couldn't repeat what Superintendent just said if I wanted to. Forty-two elementary, 12 are magnet, you know, but, but just real thorough and, you know, easy to, easy to understand communication to the public.
I mean, it sounds like we need that in the short term too, though, like in talking to parents about the high school enrollment, like what we've got to figure out before February, like that are, what Melanie was saying, that our school sites and our.
For the high school enrollment, absolutely.
But that it's the same thing as being communicated at school. We need a short-term plan around that as well.
Yes. I think too, related to short-term, so we have 15 or maybe even 16 ideas, you know, I think if we're looking for some sort of solution related to, you know, the Fairview situation, or the magnet enrollment for elementary, we've got to choose, we've got to make a choice, we've got to make a determination of our next step, if we're all in consensus that, that we need a solution, or we need to move forward.
Okay, and I'll add urgency to that, because I'm going to suggest that, that we, or propose that we have a second sign-up prior to the April enrollment, perhaps in March, so we don't talk about this for two years.
My point, urgency to a solution.
Say that again, Melanie, I'm sorry.
That we will have a second sign-up in March before enrollment in April.
Okay.
And so we will make decisions and have some offerings.
Well, you still have the capacity issue, so that, what I'm saying is the capacity issue needs to be solved. We have 15 very, you know, exciting opportunities, given the return on the investment per each, you know, suggestion, really making the decision.
And I think some can, we can take that small bite and solve several before March.
Sounds good. Sounds really good.
Can I just flesh out a little what former Nelmes was saying too, though, under the high school enrollment? I think just based on conversations we're having kind of one-off in different meetings, I think we have specific questions for schools that need to be answered. So like we know around Clark, there are some specific questions we need to iron out, we know around SCPA and enrollment, I'm sorry, addition stuff, there are questions we want to iron out, and I know it's a really short timeline, but I don't think we can go through another messy enrollment period with those, those are the two schools that, at least I know we've been talking about in different subcommittees, that we wanted to elevate to the board level.
And what were they, I'm sorry, Clark?
So with, with Clark, we need, I think there's a legal question out there around, yeah, kids with in-district versus out-of-district Montessori experience and preferencing.
Yes.
We need that question answered before enrollment happens. With SCPA, we've been talking about how.
Lots.
Lots of stuff around the audition process that needs to get ironed out before they start that, and so I think we just, those are ones I think are incredibly short-term.
And I think the short-term piece too is, is, yeah, yeah, in anticipation of the budget for next year too, there are some things that need to be addressed in the short term. So I mean, that budget dialogue's going to start very shortly, if it hasn't already started, so that's the timeline that's most crucial if there's board members that think that we need to have some change before next year, even though we've got the publications and the processes in place, the budget will, the budget process was useful. And I'm going to belabor the point, if we have the notes from tonight, if even the board staff can put together a request for information, rather than just assignments, that would be helpful.
I think under long-term though, we put anything down around like the overall.
No.
Magnet enrollment process that we spent a lot of time talking about, so I think that's one that we're going to want to dive into.
For long-term.
I'm sorry, the overall, like before next year, I think we want to have some changes to our, how our magnet process is working.
Well, we'll also, if we have a second enrollment.
Well, we'll also, if we have a second enrollment period, we'll have to come up with some interim rules, because I don't anticipate campouts in March.
So, Aunt Melanie, you anticipate a second enrollment period for new magnets we would have started? Or for the current magnets? Because if they're, if they're already full in the first round.
But not everyone's full.
Oh, okay, so any place that's not full, I'm just trying to.
We can re-advertise those that aren't full. And then if we're able to put together some space in other areas to expand, we will do that, too.
Okay, so we are at 7:30, but I know for, because you have a conversation tomorrow, it might be useful to jump ahead to kind of how this might inform any questions that are tomorrow, or do you want to?
I just don't want to leave only one thing on long term.
Oh, you have, let's see.
We have some others, streamlining. See, but that, again, it talks only really about magnet. I mean, I just worry about that or quality.
Increasing facility capacity would be long term.
Facility capacity, increase choice or expand portfolio.
Think of other choices.
I think that's what we're trying to step will come into for us to see where.
What was that you said? Think of other choices, charter schools, you know, any other options that we can bring into the district.
Can I put one more down under long term? I know we're at time.
You're on board, you get it.
All right, thank you. I know this is one that I've brought up a couple of times, but I'm worried about our gifted academy and the capacity there. We know, you know, right now Hyde Park school's only up to third grade, and so they're going to have to be adding grades. And so where we are with capacity issues there, but I also, I'm a little worried that it's so far over on the east side, and when we looked at the dot map that we were provided, there are very few dots coming from the west side, and I have to believe there's more gifted kids who maybe are feeling like that's not an option to come across the city. And so I think this is amazing how wonderful CGA is working. And so when we talk about expanding what we know works, looking into if we can see data again showing the homeschool of our students who are tested as gifted, and then the percent who are attending CGA, so then if we, maybe this isn't a problem at all, but if we see that data.
Actually, I have it, because I think you had mentioned it at the last board meeting. Now, it does go through sixth grade, not just.
Right, but the Hyde Parks, the neighborhood schools only grow into third grade so far. So once they start growing more, we're going to run out of space. So how do we replicate that great work somewhere else?
Exactly. I think we looked at 36 youngsters from west of 75. There's 36 children who attend Hyde Park.
There's more than 36 that scored high enough to go there.
That's what my question was.
Yes, they're possible, well, actually, yes. So I, we could look at possibly doing one on the other side of town. I mean, Chiviet would be, we did look just because Chiviet has eight gifted children already, and they do have some space.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And that's more specific, I think, what I was looking at was percent of kids who tested at each school from their homeschool and then percent that are going to CGA, that would give us that kind of information.
I will forward that to you.
Thank you.
It's not, just remember, it's only 5% of the population, so it's not a huge, it's not a huge number of children.
That really gave a boost to Hyde Park School.
Absolutely.
And it sounds like from some of the folks over there, they're eager to, to share their learnings and to have this happen somewhere else and, and share what they've learned and how it's working there. So that could be a great opportunity.
And as Ambassador to Chiviet, I could tell you that they would.
I was going to say something about your diplomatic status.
I know they might, they might be interested, but then again, I want to make sure that the parents are interested in going and it's not.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because if we open it and they stay at Hyde Park. But that's.
Would be additional children, even if they're wedded to Hyde Park.
Exactly.
I'm sure there are more, you know, those that are in addition to the 36.
Good, go there. The good news is that this board is very impatient. The bad news is that this board is very impatient. And so this is, it's very exciting that we have this platform call, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. So do you want to take a minute and just kind of brainstorm some questions that this might be giving you for tomorrow? That would be useful to, to get into the room in terms of thinking what collaborations might be useful, what information is needed, what?
And this is in respect to the Bellwether report being delivered tomorrow, that indeed, we want to walk in there prepared and anxious to learn from them, and so yes, go for it.
So we're tying magnet enrollment into Bellwether?
I think since.
Quality seats. Quality seats.
Be clear, okay, okay.
I mean, I think my basic question is if we know what works and where it's working, and we know we're going to need money to expand.
Are they interested in investing?
Right, like, how do we, how do we make the pitch in an effective way, since there's going to be a whole lot of groups vying for that same pot of money, too? So how do we make sure that we are compelling, making a compelling case for, for these, these schools and these seats?
Well, my understanding is that CPS is in demand to be the partner. I don't.
Yeah.
This partner, the main partner. So maybe there's a point of clarification, because I had not thought that we would be competing for dollars for the seats with anyone else.
If you want to know who are, so the question might become, who else are you considering partnering with?
Yeah, true clarification.
Right. I think if there's potential charters, there's parochial schools and all, so how do we make sure we're.
Competing.
We're looking good.
And being successful. We do have a lot to offer. We have buildings. If I could ask, is there anything, Superintendent, that you feel that needed to be? You have wonderful folks here. Is there any particular piece that you think would help us any further? I know this is only our first conversation, certainly not our last, but if there's any piece, information, that we good?
I think we're good.
Yeah, I would like to ask a question perhaps about next step, or, you know, tonight we did this as an open forum without input from the public. When will we or what process will we use to engage the public so that we can hear from concerned community members?
I think we need something to show them.
I can agree with that.
So until we have that, it would be difficult to get input, because it would be the same brains, it would be separate brainstorming.
Yeah, I can agree with that, and I in no way want to, you know, just a storm of comment and, you know, that kind of thing, where we're not focused on the same point. But perhaps, well, I think it's important that we are, though, making decisions that involve the public in some way. You know, again, the question is what's important to the public? Is it the expansion of the same 12 schools? Or is it more important to ensure the same resources at every school for every child per the demand of the public? So I think anytime you're talking about public engagement and that, you have to tailor it to fit the circumstance, so.
I would.
To keep it in, just to keep it in the conversation.
I would think after tomorrow's presentation, when we have a sense of where Bellwether is, and knowing that we have organizational meetings the very first part of January, I think if the board is interested, and I think the board is interested, to start to expedite this conversation after we get more information from the administration, that we should be thinking about some times in January, to not meet maybe one more time kind of together like this, and then start to figure out how to engage the public with their great insights as to what the demand may be, because they're the ones that have to make the decision about where to go and what to do. So January, I think, should be a month that we spend some time on that.
Add to that that we have another very good resource, which is we have our fellow, who we've assigned that this huge project will be what he's working on for six months, trying to herd these cats. And so I think that'll be, hopefully, between Gillian and Joe's notes tonight, maybe helping bucket a lot of these questions for us. So when we come back in January, there's some of these kind of teased out into more, more categorized than our brainstorm tonight, that could be helpful for us to see.
And two, to board member base concern about having something to show the public, while I still feel very adamant that we need to, you know, include some of the direction from the public, it can be done by survey. I mean, it doesn't have to be a traditional forum by which, you know, we don't have anything to show or folks are angry, you know. But our fellow perhaps may have some ideas about community input.
And with the, with the changes that have recently been made at senior staff level, indeed, we have, you know, the capacity's been increased to do even more engagement and opportunities. So that can be an assignment as we go, and I know they'll be looking at that. I look forward to what they're able to, to bring to us. But I guess January, we get more information and, and we'll continue the dialogue and engage the public. We're going to close and thank Dr. Darwish, thank Gillian for facilitating this, and also greatly thank our superintendent and senior staff for putting this material together. And of course, like always, we gave you even more work to do. Sorry about that, but it is what it is. We also have a little bit of announcement, too, a couple things. Those folks that were here tonight that did not have an opportunity to speak, there were two that signed up, please, please submit some of what you wanted to have said to us, to our board staff, so that we don't lose what you came to present tonight. That would be useful for us. And also, the board has in front of them at their place two documents. One is a resolution as a result of the work done by the Finance Committee last week particularly regarding, and over the last several months, regarding the easement piece at J.P. Parker, and it's a possibility that we will be looking at that tonight, and hopefully with a 48-hour waiver, possibly voting on that resolution regarding the easement. And then also, there's a somewhat updated total draft form of the MOU. It is not ready for full consideration, but certainly ready for board to, to think about and see where we are. It's my understanding that whatever occurred in student achievement yesterday has been incorporated, and if not, the chair can.
Well, yeah, there were additional stuff added today. We have a chance to discuss that tomorrow?
Sure, we can, we can do it.
Great.
We can do it, because I know there's, there's a great sense of regarding the easement piece and the presentation that was done by the MedPace people for finance in executive session. So those are things that are happening, and we have a special public in there, because we do have things to vote on tomorrow. Any other questions or comments?
Well, there'll be people to answer some of the questions that we had on the easement piece, too, from the city there tomorrow.
We can try to make that happen regarding answers, so that the whole board hears those answers. The other piece, too, and I did talk to a couple of our board members that sometimes have to leave right at 1:00, there's a very real likelihood that we'll be going into executive session at the end of tomorrow's meeting for a couple of purposes. So that's been noticed, so appreciate them making arrangements regarding their agenda, and if anybody else needs to, if you can, that would be great.
I have one question in order for me to prepare for a conversation related to this MOU. Has the Student Achievement Committee vetted this MOU in its entirety?
Not the draft you see before you. We, we did, and then again, some things were changed, modified today, after Student Achievement gave input yesterday.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks to all that were here, particularly senior staff and everybody else. We are adjourned. Big Joe, where's Big Joe? Big Joe, get him here.
We had a great time with him, I'd.
Oh, right, that's right, of course.